Okay, the time is seven o'clock and I call this February tenth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, regular meeting of Borough Council to order, uh, and I'll pass it on to Councilor Stube for the moment of silence and the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for this evening's moment of silence, I just ask that everybody, um, observe the next sixty seconds in silence reflecting whatever way you feel appropriate.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Krampsey.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Here.
Ms. Mellon.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Mayor Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Stube.
Here.
And Ms. Hayes.
Here.
Thank you. Um, next is opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. Uh, members of the public will have an opportunity to, uh, to address Borough Council, um, at this time. Uh, folks who have, uh, requested to be heard specifically, uh, will, will have come up first and, and Tamela Tressel, that, that means you're up. So you can come on up to the podium. Uh, I know you have an informative, uh, presentation for us.
I hope so. Well, um, thank you once again, uh, Borough Council and Mayor Schultz for, um, having me here tonight to talk to you about, um, the Move Past Plastic PFOS campaign and why it's important and, um, how you can take part in it. So, um, there's several components to the, uh, Move Past Plastic PFOS campaign. And one of the major ones is to educate communities, municipalities, the government bodies, citizens, and business people about what PFOS are and why we should, um, be concerned about them and how we can try to avoid them and protect ourself from the potential health harms that they pose. The second objective for the campaign is to, um, uh, have the municipalities test for PFOS prior to DEP's rulemaking, um, when it goes into being enforced in approximately, um, two to three years from now. And the last, um, component of this is to share any, um, drinking water, well-watered soil, uh, testing for PFOS with DEP so that, um, it could help inform them about, um, uh, their, um, the rulemaking and to impact that. So, um, Move Past Plastic, you're probably thinking, gosh, what does that have to do with PFOS if you know what PFOS are? And if you don't, you're probably still wondering. But, um, basically in plastics, there are, um, the Nordic Council of Ministers put out a report showing that there are a hundred and forty-four, um, known hazardous chemicals in plastics. Do you guys mind if I just slip this down a little? It's a little harder.
I was gonna suggest you do so.
It's hard to talk and breathe. Okay, wonderful. Um, so, oh, you can hear me so much better. Um, so, uh, that's known hazardous chemicals that they have established as and recognized as known. However, there are literally hundreds of more chemicals, including PFOS, that ha- um, have not been designated as a known hazardous chemical. So a PFOS is a per and polyfluorinated carbon, um, I'm sorry, alkaline substance. And it is where the carbon and fluorine bond are one of the stronger bonds that can be made. So because of this, these chemicals do not break down in the, um, environment and they have a tendency to stay there, spread out, get into the food chain and bioaccumulate. And, um, so they're, they're just very, you know, prolific. Um, so, um, some of the products that we, um, are, get ourselves exposed to every day in addition to our drinking water are from common, um, household items such as the couch you may sit on, personal hygiene, uh, all the way from dental floss to your lipstick, shampoos. They're on, um, in our cookware, they're in our clothing, they're in our carpets, tires. Um, the reason why is because PFOS were made in order to resist and repel oil, water, and, um, heat. And so any products that need these attributes contain PFOS. So even your packaging, um, a lot of us do takeout. So your takeout packaging, um, including some that are compostable as well as plastic packaging will contain PFOS in them and your popcorn, all kinds of things. The, um, industries that use a lot of PFOS in them, as you could see, are oil and gas. They're, um, he- uh, heavily, um, prevalent in waste management. Um, of course, any metal, uh, work and it, you can see, um, heavy in, uh, plastics and the resins that are used in them. There are over five thousand different PFOS chemicals and more are being made every day. Currently, what's being made are short and ultra-short PFOS that are supposed to replace the two, um, the types of PFOS, two of which the DEP is going to attempt to regulate. So, um, you have your sources and your collections. You can see the collections. Is there a way to move this closer to me? It's anchored. Never mind. I'm gonna just come to the side. Um, so you can see that the collection areas are landfills and wa- um, your wastewater treatment plants, uh, sewage sludge and biosolids. So some of the health risks in animal studies are liver, testicular, pancreatic cancers, liver enlargement, mammary gland tumors, altered breast development, depressed immunotoxicity, and changes in lipid serum. There's a lot more that has, um, come out as well, but these are the agreed-upon, um, studies that DEP and EPA have. Um, I, I get at least thirty different studies from scientific articles a week on these. It's crazy. Um, some of the health, uh, human health studies that they, um, uh, agree that there are problems with is increased risk of thyroid disease, high, uh, blood cholesterol, decreased body's response to vaccines, which in this time of COVID is a problem, um, uh, decreased fertility in women, increased high blood pressure in, um, preclampsia, and then low infant birth weight. There have been many articles that are coming out linking, um, all kinds of infant and child, um, health problems, um, developmentally and intellectually as well, um, recently. Um, so where are things at? Cause we kinda need to know where are things at and where we're going. So EPA has known that these chemicals are hazardous since two thousand and one, um, with a study, um, I'm sorry, with a lawsuit that occurred and several afterwards that, um, the, uh, uh, what is it? Plaintiff, um, plaintiffs won against DuPont. And, um, it was the largest epidemic ecological study ever undertaken, sixty-nine thousand individuals. So there, you know, made a direct correlation to PFOS in health. So that's important to understand, um, is that there is science on these connections. Um, so the, um, uh, EPA started, uh, they, I have a whole PowerPoint slide on this, but they're up and down with their stuff. But where they're at now in two thousand sixteen, they've made a health advisory for seventy parts per trillion. That's a grain of sand in about a thousand gallons of water. Okay? So it's very small amount, very small amount. Now, the, um, the Environmental Working Group and other scientific studies agree that one to six part per trillion is the safe amount. The seventy part per trillion is a lifetime limit. All right? So the Biden administration has just, um, uh, allotted ten billion dollars to clean up emergent contaminants. PFOS is one of these emergent contaminants. And, um, the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, um, they are going to be testing and monitoring and remediating thirty contaminants. Um, twenty-nine of these are PFOS. So that's, that's really great, right? And this will be occurring during the years of, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. Currently, eleven states have established some regulation for PFOS. And, um, the, uh, California has the most rigorous and it's sitting at five-one. And, um, uh, you can see a couple of the others. There's tons of maps and I can provide you with those of what the other eleven states are doing. So, um, DEP has sent forth, um, a rulemaking from the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water that they would like to set limits for two out of eighteen that they're tested for. Okay? The testing is, um, just evolving over the last, like, five years and really even the last year or two because think about how little they're testing for, right? That little grain of sand and thousands of gallons of water, right? So, um, they're getting better all the time. They can test up to thirty-six now, uh, effectively. But, um, so they did a total of four hundred and twelve different sites. One-fourth of them did contain, um, PFOS in them. Out of the, um, eighteen that they tested for, they found eight different PFOS present. This chart, I don't really like it, but I put it up there, um, just to, just because it was, you know, one off of the DEP there. Um, it's showing you minimums, maximums, averages, medians. But what I think you should look at is, uh, the bottom because the very bottom, it's telling you, like, for PFOA, it has about sixty parts per trillion and PFO, P- PFOAS, it has a, just under one ninety. And you can see some of the other ones, what they had as the maximum level. So say in Carlisle, um, the Army War College Drinking Water has thirty-seven, I think, point six parts per trillion in their drinking water. So we really don't care about the averages, right? Every community needs to find out what their levels are. We don't care about a state average, right? State average isn't affecting us. Our levels are. So this is a map of some of the hundred and twenty, um, facilities across, uh, twenty thousand, sorry, hundred and twenty thousand facilities across the country that could be contributing to, um, PFOS contamination. So circling back to sources that could, you know, impact us the most, one of them, if you remember, were landfills, right? And so we have two in Cumberland County. Cumberland County ranked seventh out of sixty-seven counties for having the most landfills per capita, third out of sixty-seven for the most landfills per square mile. Um, Cumberland County took frac waste, um, uh, water, flowback water, um, in two thousand and twelve. And that's important to understand because if you remember the other slide, it was how, um, prolific PFOS are in, um, the oil and fossil, uh, fossil fuel industry. And so that waste was brought here. Now, I don't believe it has, um, been brought here at, to our landfill since. They do have some violations I just found through another map, but I haven't had a chance to look at what they were. And it won't be PFOS because PFOS isn't considered hazardous yet. Um, this is another map that tells you the potential sites that are dealing with PFOS-type products or such. And you can see, um, I, I need to be like a graphic artist. The Conde Gwinnett Creek is up on top and Susquehanna is to the right. And Carlisle, if you look at the, um, to the lo- lower left, you'll see a gray dot to a gray dot. That's kind of our region. And so, um, those are potential sites. And so they're going to be, um, and include, you know, everything from our airport, industry, Army War College, um, the landfills, um, and such, like that. So one thing that that map does not cover, just to kind of wrap this up, is it doesn't cover legacy landfills and old industry. So Carlisle Tire and Rubber is an old industry. Remember, I told you that PFOS are heavily present in tires and carpets. So we have that. Um, ca- currently Carlisle Syntec has several spots in those dots that you saw earlier. And we had four old legacy landfills. Um, the, uh, this Coon Dump and, uh, Masland Dye, cause it's heavy, um, PFOS are heavy, heavily present in, um, uh, paint as well. It's, uh, one of the things. But those are along the Latour Creek. Now, do those two dumps that were there along Latour Creek, is that why, um, the, uh, um, Army barracks has a high PFOS level? I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't know why theirs is high. Um, could be. This is another landfill that now is in the township of North Middleton, but it used to be, um, Carlisle where we dumped all that carpet and we dumped all the tire, um, stuff. If you look at this map and you can see a little stream that's, um, right above the Conde Gwinnett Creek. And above that stream is the landfill. And that stream is impaired. It is full of iron oxidizing bacteria which feeds off of, um, uh, you know, inorganic matter. So, uh, basically all the stuff from the landfill, it's, it's digesting. And, um, this creek, that landfill represents one of who knows how many unknown streams and unknown legacy landfills and unknown legacy industries that are impacting us today. So when you look at these maps, keep that in mind, that yes, one, the map might not be showing you all the potential hazards. And two, there's a lot of hazards that aren't mapped. You're gonna have to go back into your history and look at. So that's something municipalities will need to ferret out. Uh, so that kind of wraps it up. So just to recap, Move Past Plastic understands that the borough is aware of PFOS and they would like to do something about it. I'm asking the municipalities to test for PFOS now in, um, in spite of the fact that DEP, um, is gonna be doing that, uh, I don't wanna get it wrong now that you, that thing where they're gonna test in two thousand and three and five for those twenty contaminants. Sorry, my mind has been playing, um, unregulated chemicals. Um, so, but that's not gonna be for another two years, right? And then the rulemaking won't go through to enforce testing for another at least two or three years. So in the meantime, to help the DEP get a, a, a good, appropriate rulemaking, I'd like to see more testing for more PFOS, like at least the minimum of eighteen, pretty soon the thirty-six, cause some of them do the thirty-six, I believe, the five thirty-three test. Um, that, that should, that should just be there, right? And then, um, uh, also to lower the lim- to lower the parts per trillion. So that's what we'll be asking. So thank you so very much for having me here today. I hope I didn't talk too fast. It was very hard to get this in fifteen minutes.
Tamela, you did, you did an excellent job. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and I know we've had some exchanges over the, the last, the last week, um, had a nice chat last, last week. So we, we, we've tried to provide you the information that we have from our testing back in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, which is different than what we'll be doing this year that we've, we've budgeted for. Uh, but one of the interesting things that I, I found was that, um, and I think you noted it on one of the early slides, um, about, um, you know, put it delicately, that the, the F, the sludge coming from, from wastewater treatment plants can be a source of it. Uh, and we were testing, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're testing at our, at our water plant, um, not, not necessarily the, the, the output from the, from the sewer plant back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Right? Yeah. And, and, um, and our plan this, this year is, is to do the same at the water treatment plant again. Um, and, and we do know that, at least the, the figures that we have presently, um, you know, the, the testing per, per sample is, uh, I don't remember exactly. Mark, help me with that. Seven, seven hundred dollars or so. I'd have to pull it back up. But yeah, 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 le- less than, less than a thousand dollars per, per, per sample. Um, and it would be interesting, not interesting, but I think important to know not only what we're taking in, into our system and delivering to borough residents, but also what we're, um, sending further on down, down the, down the creek.
Yeah. So, and, and just one other thing I, I should note that, um, legacy landfill in North Middleton, of course, is, um, downstream from us. So we won't be impacted by, by any contaminants coming out of that, right? But our neighbors, you know, will to the east of us. And, um, the, the bio sludge and the waste often gets put on to our farm fields, right? And so that just gets it into the food chain and, and, and the system and gets it bioaccumulation happening. So it's a catch twenty-two, cause it's a good thing to do, right? Unless you have toxins in there that are, so.
Right, yeah. And I think, Mark, we have some flexibility that prior to the, the comment period now extended Tamela into, into May, right?
Yeah. So, um, right now, I found out that, um, where, where things are in the process, they're with the Attorney General. And then when, when it goes, comes back from the Attorney General, it's gotta hit up a few more stages and then it'll go to public comment. So, so they told me that it would be the end of February, March. I'm thinking it's probably gonna be April if we're lucky. Kinda like they told me we were gonna have public comment in January. But yeah, I, I looked at the rulemaking process and I, um, just started typing it up tonight because I think it's interesting to know what that rulemaking process is. And it's long and arduous because especially for residents, they're just like, well, why does it take so long? They know what's wrong, just do it. But there's a big, long process. And I think it's important process. And so I think for residents to be able to have that process be put in an, in infographic, which I won't be able to do really, but it'd be, it'd be really helpful, I think, to, um, help them understand how the governing, um, pathway systems, you know, work and try and protect us and, um, take care of things. But it, it takes time.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we have, we'll have some time flexibility. We, we, we can get the sampling and testing done prior to that, that time period. Maybe help that, have that help us inform our, if we want to present any, any comment ourselves.
Yeah, that'd be, it'd be, it'd be great. Um, and, you know, show you guys to be real leaders because, you know, unless a municipality has a, a really bad known hazard and, you know, are forced to test a lo- it, you know, I'm sure Carlisle, besides that, um, unregulated contaminant test number three back in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen, you didn't test and we didn't really know. So for you guys to lead the way with testing and like I said, I wanna get the entire Conde Gwinnett Creek watershed, all the municipalities up and down that to, to test. So that'd, you know, show real leadership to, to do that.
Yeah. And then at a future meeting, we can talk about mitigation, right?
I know. I know. I'm like, oh, no, there's so much to talk about. But, um, feel free to reach out to me and, um, I, you know, uh, would love to do presentations on more in depth about PFOS and everything from artificial turf to, it can go on and on and how we can try and minimize things in with plastics and anything. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the rest of council have any, any questions before Tamela steps away?
Ju- just a, a quick process question. So when public comment opens up, um, and I guess this is for the mayor, can we consider if we would do those individually or as a council, we could submit comment? Is there, is it a more effective?
Yeah, thank you so much for bringing that up. Um, so the, right now, I have a landing page established and I, I gave you guys, um, uh, the version. Uh, there'll be a shorter version on the landing page. Um, uh, but people will, will be able to go to this landing page and submit their comments directly. It'll be easy and I'm gonna have toolkits. So if you're from the military or were a firefighter or you're pregnant or whatever, it'll have talking points for you to look at and resources to bounce to so that you can, you know, write about your personal concerns. And all of those will get collected and, and sent in. And, um, if you want to give oral, um, testimony, that you'll need to register for, but I'll get that put up on the, on the website too, the movepastplastic.com website. And, um, the, we're gonna have our first scheduled watch party for groundswell rising on February the twenty-fifth, six thirty to eight thirty. So be on the lookout for that. I'll post that probably tomorrow. Um, the, uh, it's an Emmy award-winning documentary and the producer, director, and a person who was in the film are going to be guest speakers after the watch party. So that'll just be our first launch of public education. So pass it along.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Tamela. Thank you for all the, the info. And I, I'll tell you, I, um, it was years ago. I didn't make the connection until talking to Tamela last week that, uh, I read an article when I was visiting my parents about, uh, PFOA. I didn't know it was PFOS at the time, um, that I was drinking throughout my childhood. And it was extremely elevated because I grew up near Willow Grove Naval Air Station, um, out, out in the, the southeastern part of the state. So it's something we need to stay, stay aware of. And I appreciate the presentation tonight. Thank you. We all appreciate it. Thanks. Um, is there any other public comment on, on any issues of the, of the borough that anybody would like to present at this time? Anything on, on, on Zoom? Yeah, sorry. Always look the wrong way. Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that the item will be considered separately. Uh, does any member of council wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Any member of the public? Okay. Hearing, hearing none there. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
So met, motion by Deputy Mayor Landis. Is there a second? A second by, uh, Councilor Krampsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. The second by uh Counselor Krampsey, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Move on to the the uh the pink pages, if you if you have them in your hands there. Um the regular agenda, there are no table continued recurring items. Move on to to the mayor's report. We have a resolution honoring uh Jay Sherwood McGinnis Jr., and for that, I will hand it over to Counselor Stube.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um um many people on council, at least, and and maybe in the room tonight um had the privilege of knowing uh Joseph Sherwood McGinnis Jr., or as many of us would have known him, Sherwood during his life. Um sadly, uh he was he was a respected um member of our community who who contributed a lot. Um sadly, he passed away uh at the end of last year, uh last November. Um some individuals who are close with Sherwood uh contacted council about us recognizing his contributions to the community. Um and and this is our way of doing so, uh passing a resolution or considering a resolution, I guess, um honoring his life and and contributions to Carlisle. Um at at one point, we were going to have this on the agenda in March uh to in in tandem with the War, Peace and Justice Symposium that uh is now um named after Sherwood uh that he was helping organize prior to his passing, uh but that's been postponed due to the the pandemic. So we are um having having it on the agenda now to consider. Um so I will just respectfully ask that uh everybody on council vote in favor of this, and if anybody had any other comments they wanted to share.
Why don't we, um since you've put all that work into it, Jeff, to draft it, if you'd like to make a motion?
Sure, um I'll move the council adopt a resolution uh honoring the life and contributions of Jay Sherwood McGinnis Jr.
There is a motion by Counselor Stube, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, uh I'll call the I'll well, before I call the question, would would anybody else like to make any comments about Sherwood? I don't wanna cut you short cuz I know that was a a loss to our community. And I know a lot of you probably have wonderful things to say about Sherwood, and it's often difficult in these times to to really speak up for someone who who meant so much to so many here and and who was so devoted to to peace in the end in the end. Uh although he, you know, he he served in the military, um peace is important to every every soldier and sailor. Um so that, oh, go go ahead, Counsel.
Thanks um for pausing there, Mr. Mayor. I I I do um want to share that um something that's really impacted me from um Sherwood's background and experience that um I think directly, I would say encouraged me to get out of my comfort zone is um anybody who's talked to Sherwood for a few minutes realizes his intellect is deep and um his perceptions of the needs of the world and community are are quite profound. Um with a lot of people, it sort of stops there, and it doesn't translate to action. And if there was one thing that I probably admired more than the many things that are admirable about Sherwood was that he was just never satisfied by being smart. He really um thought it was essential to put that into practice, and and he did in more ways than than I can outline here. But um I think that's important. Um to it was important to me, it was important my decision to even run for council, and uh I'm better off knowing him.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Any other members of council?
Just uh just briefly, and thank you, uh Counselor Stube, for bringing this up. Uh just to echo um Joel's comments, not not only was Sherwood um brilliant, uh but he was a kind, kind person. Um and I think uh one one of the things that stuck with me is Sherwood's ability to be passionate um about democracy uh and registering people to vote. I know that's a a project he took on um in this community with with registering uh young and old. Um so I think this is a great um way to honor him. Uh and I think in everything we should we do uh within the borough, we should think about, you know, the folks that we represent, and many of them were touched by uh Sherwood getting them involved in this process. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Krampsey. Anyone else? Okay, then I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. And I I we we can perhaps uh have have a couple of resolutions that I'll sign so we can pass one on to to his daughter also. Um moving on to reports from committees, uh Deputy Deputy Mayor, E R E R C.
Thank you, Mayor Schultz. Uh I would like to make the motion that Borough Council appoint Mr. David Sheridan as the Transportation Task Force Lead on the Climate Action Commission. The term will become effective immediately and shall expire September first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh this term expiration is consistent with the current Climate Action Commission members.
There is a motion by the Deputy Mayor to appoint David Sheridan to the Climate Action Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. And and again, I'll I'll note it's someone who interviewed for the council position. We we wanted people to step up, and and Mr. Sheridan is stepping right up, so we appreciate that.
Absolutely, um and that completes my report for today.
Thank you. Um Parks and Rec, Counsel Mellon.
Uh I would like to make a motion that council approved the park design for lots A and D of the Fairground Avenue Linear Park as submitted by Frederick Seibert and Associates, or F S A. Um and furthermore, that council authorized F S A to prepare bid documents and advertise the bid for construction on Penn Bid.
There is a motion to approve the park design for lots A and D of Fairground Avenue Linear Park. I will second that that motion. Um and before I call the question, um I know ma- maybe, I don't, oh, Andrea is by Zoom. Um so can we maybe have a presentation um on on the on the the design here, yeah? I'll just need your name and address for the record.
Okay, uh five oh five South Hanover Street in Carlisle. Um we are the engineers and landscape architects involved with this uh project. Uh we've worked closely with the community representatives, uh in particular with the skate park, but also with the uh design of the the entire linear park itself, and closely with Deputy Mayor Landis and um the Parks and Rec Committee as well. Uh and we have presented um multiple concepts and designs uh in across multiple meetings at the end of last year and the beginning of this year. Um really trying to build a design uh that uh not all just not just enhances the the opportunities of the park, but also uh caters to the needs, you know, of the community and what the community is looking for. Um we were uh provided two different properties uh for the linear park itself. Lot A and Lot D are the what they're referred to as. They are smaller portions of the entire redevelopment properties uh deal Maslin site. Uh Lot A is what you see here, a skate park um designed uh by armored concrete uh skate park designers. Uh we are referring to it as a skate spot because it is relatively small in size. It is under five thousand square feet, uh but heavily influenced by skaters within the community itself. Multiple iterations uh of this design catering to their needs and what they're looking for. And we don't come to the table as skate park uh experts by any means, so we brought, you know, somebody uh up to the table who has the experience and has uh constructed skate parks throughout central P A and um and the region outside of P A as well. Um the this is a rendering here of the skate park that you'll see for uh Lot A. Consisting of different features, again, uh supported and decided on by the community members themselves. So Lot D, uh further north on Fairground Avenue. Um this is the uh B Street uh roundabout coming in the near future, and the C Street on this side. So north is actually that direction. The uh the park itself is taking advantage of a uh currently uh sort of a construction site uh sort of uh uh in a corner within the redevelopment area adjacent to the the future residential uh properties. Uh so nicely located to, you you know, the the future neighborhoods uh within that redevelopment uh project. But the uh the the park itself is mainly passive recreation, uh we would call it. It there's a ten-foot wide shared use trail throughout the the park. It's a gray uh curved line there. Along with uh some paths through the park, there'll be some solar lighting uh for features in in the evening. They will, there is a accessible playground, this sort of colorful area down here uh with some inclusive playground structures um for those uh with needs. The colors themselves signify the um port in place sort of rubber playground surfacing uh that you see at playgrounds uh that meet accessibility standards, but also cater to the the safety heights uh for falling off of equipment uh per the uh manufacturer's standards. But landscaped around the playground uh to provide some natural aesthetic. Over here in the center, there'll be some um swing benches, you see here, uh sort of more adult themed, uh but with also the um the playground surfacing, again, for safety uh purposes. But this will be landscaped as well with some stations for hammocks um in along this sort of secondary pathway. But ultimately, this will be uh sort of an area of interest along the uh larger network for that Fairground Avenue multi-use trail um connecting from the skate park further north. Those are the basic features of the park. I I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Yeah, thank you. I think Counselor Hicks is called dibs on a hammock.
Yeah, that that guttural noise was me responding to the hammocks being there. I missed missed that in some phase of this.
We'll put your name on the plan there next to that.
Deputy Deputy Mayor, will that make some comments?
Uh so I've been to every one of these meetings from the very beginning, and it's been an incredible process to be part of. Um and and uh there's been a lot of revision. So this is a final design, but there has been a lot of revision taken from the community. Both uh you know, Stephanie created the survey on our um what's it called? I forget.
Carlisle.
Engage, right, exactly. And uh and so we took that as the first pass, but then had a lot of personal discussion in meetings. And then um uh you know, with the skate park, we um also took uh, you know, at least one person who had a lot of knowledge and and sat down with him and the designer to ensure that we were on the right path. Um and and uh the skate park itself, I mean, uh we'll start with that one. And they have uh, you know, there there's two different groups of skaters, and so trying to find in a small space something that works for everyone. Um I think we came out with a very good balance between street and bowl skating. And uh yes, it's not the the largest skate park, but neither was Steelton, as it's been said many times, that it was started small and it was able to grow. Also, uh some of the comments, I meant to bring this up to Chief Landis, is that there has been a request to have uh the officers present, but also engaged, and said that that's a reason why Steelton has been so successful, is that when they see the police coming, it's not because bad things, it's because they're just checking in and hanging out. And I don't know if you have any skating um officers, but you have some time to practice to get to get some balance. Um as for the this one, I mean, again, we we had a lot of back and forth, and uh that passive area with the hammocks, uh the idea of, you know, you don't grow out of wanting to swing, you just swing a little slower. So gliders, swings, hammocks, um a comfortable setting also close to the kid area. Uh and and connecting those two spaces. So this one was chosen because it is so close to the residential and it's a little bit quieter. Um the skate park is along the railroad tracks and isn't as uh adjacent to as many homes. Um but we also have worked very hard to ensure that it is going to be a a good place and that it's not going to um uh be problematic with the neighbors, but we are still working. I mean, there's lights and, you know, again, trying to make sure that our our officers are engaged and that we can um and we have a lot of the the uh skaters that showed up too. They are uh longtime skaters, and they want this to be successful. And so that mentorship with the younger folks, I think, is also um crucial, and and there's that buy-in already. So um the process has been wonderful. Uh F S A and Andrea and the Parks and Rec Board have all been um very thoughtful and a- ans- asking questions, answering questions, and having meetings when we needed meetings. Uh um so I'm I'm very pleased with how this process has gone.
Thank you, yeah, I would just like to sort of reiterate that. Uh it's been very enthusiastic meetings uh that we've had. A lot of people have been very excited for the skate park. More more particular to skate park, but the other park spaces as well. But uh we have had a a lot of good meetings that have uh had a lot of great discussion. Um and we really came together on it, I think, a good idea uh that meets and caters to both sides of sort of the skating community. And uh it 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 really has created a sort of a rich project that um it's great to see within the community.
Any any other questions from council?
Might not be a question, uh and council probably gets sick of me uh talking about food trucks, but I'm just thinking as we're as we're talking through the skate park in this um park, I'm I'm wondering. Uh I know we've had numerous discussions over the past few years about um maybe offering local businesses um outdoor space, you know, on weekends, uh and just thinking of what this environment's gonna be like, I think. You know, if you're a skater, if you're at the playground and you want a drink or something to eat, we should uh revisit that and figure out ways we can implement our local businesses in uh into this area. Thanks.
I would also, sorry, I'd just like to add, there are gonna be water fountains proposed within uh but I see your point, but it there will be water fountains available and other amenities like that, that I didn't really get into those details, with bike racks and things like that.
Excellent, I know I I had um an exchange with uh with a downtown business owner um who's interested in the inclusivity of this park. And I know because of its compactness makes some of that a little more difficult. Um and this is not not for you, Chris, so much, but the future to kind of think about as we do park projects. Um and there may be opportunities at some that are that are, you know, pending right now that that we could do perhaps a better job for for those who need a little more accessibility to our parks. Thank thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So I will I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
Okay. I make a motion that the council approved the purchase of a Kubota F three nine ninety small tractor for thirty-five thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents from Kubota Tractor Corporation through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars.
Counselor Mellon makes a motion to purchase a Kubota tractor. I'll second that motion. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Mellon. Um move on to public safety. I move the council approved special events application and street closure request from the Employment Skills Center to conduct the two thousand twenty-two Employment Skills Downtown Mile on Thursday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from five P M. to eight forty-five P M. as outlined in the submitted request. The approval shall be subject to receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form naming the borough of Carlisle as an additional insured receipt of Penn dot approval, the applicant disseminating flyers to residences impacted by said closures, and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Additionally, uh the council waived the borough of Carlisle prohibition of public consumption and restriction of open containers of alcohol for the Employment Skills Center fundraising post-race beer garden event to be held on a private parking lot open to the public use. J F C Staff and Company at one oh one West High Street waiver shall be in effect on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from five thirty P M. to eight forty-five P M. That's the longest motion I've ever had to make. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that that is one motion or?
I I just made it as one motion.
For both items?
For both items, yeah.
I second that motion.
You want me to do it again? There's there there's a second by Counselor Hicks, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That concludes my report. Move on to Public Works, Counsel Perry.
Um I make a motion for council to authorize the mayor to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewerage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form for connection to the borough's sanitary sewer system from the proposed twenty-seven unit townhomes Hamilton Commons Development to be located at the northeast corner of Clay and Hamilton Street. to be located at the northeast corner of Clay and Hamilton Streets.
There's a motion by Councilor Perry to approve the sewage facilities planning module exemption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube. Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
I also make a motion for Borough Council to approve the purchase of the five rotor module model IQ thirty-five electric valve actuators for the wastewater treatment plant from the Edwin Elliott and Company of Lafayette Hill, PA for seventy-four thousand one hundred and five five dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Motion by Council Perry to approve the purchase of actuators for the wastewater treatment plant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on to sustainability and community planning. Council Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items for this evening. First one, I make a motion to approve a waiver for the submission of a preliminary subdivision and land development plan for Hamilton Commons L O P. Related with that, Borough Council may approve a final subdivision and land development plan for Hamilton Commons L O P submitted by Burget and Associates to subdivide the seven point seven 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 five acre parcel located on the northeast corner of Clay Street and Hamilton Street in the R three high density residential zoning district into two parcels, develop a twenty-eight unit townhome development on the three point six to three acre northern parcel created by the subdivision, subject to the applicant's acceptance and satisfactory resolution of the conditions listed therein.
It's a close second. There's a motion by Council Hicks to both approve the waiver for the submission preliminary plan and approve the final plan for Hamilton Commons L O P. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. Is there any?
I just want to make make for everyone's edification, that that first portion, and I correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, was that the the initial plan went in before we had updated our SALDO statute. So the process had gotten underway so that did not feel like they needed to submit a, we they could grant, we could grant them a waiver because of that sort of grandfather.
It was pending at the time of amendment. Yep, okay. Any other questions, discussion on this item? Do we have anybody who wants in the audience who wants to present on that? Sure, sure. You want to give 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 a brief one? You're here, so. Just name name an address for the record. It can be your business address.
Sure. My name is Chris Henkel. I'm with Burget and Associates. We're at seventeen ninety-seven New Bloomfield Road, New Bloomfield, Pennsylvania. And actually, I have a few handouts if you guys wish. And as stated, the site is located at Hamilton and Clay. We have seven point seven acre parcel, and it currently has the lower section, the southern section, has garden apartments already established with an existing drive that goes through, has a one-way access and comes back out on the Clay Street. The purpose of our subdivision is to basically cut off the northern section, the northern half, and basically create the entire upper end as all townhome situ- as townhome situation. We've decided to do a subdivision to create an area along Clay Street that will handle all the stormwater flows that come off of all the drainage out there. The lots where the the townhomes will be accessed through a two-way street coming back with a cul-de-sac to the backside on the eastern side with parking and all the utilities basically within that roadway.
Any any questions from council on this item? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I will call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
And the last item I have, I move that council consider a waiver for the submission of a formal land development plan, section two twenty-six dash fourteen, two twenty-six dash seventeen, and two twenty-six dash twenty-one of the SALDO by the Carlisle Area School District for the proposed construction of an artificial turf athletic field at the district's property at six twenty-three West Penn Street.
Some motion by Councilor Hicks for the waiver of the submission of a formal land development plan for the athletic field. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. I will, is there any discussion on this item?
I hope it it's a small PFAS artificial turf. I learned today that artificial turf might be vulnerable, so that I might be questioning, I want to ask to see just what the material is, just to we're aware of it. I think the more relevant thing is how easy it is to separate these chemicals that, you know, PFAS can easily be detached from what's housing it. So as I learn more, I'll I'll keep keep my eye and share what information I have on that, so.
Thank you. I will then call the question.
One thing, and it was recommended that if we do move forward on this, that we may, that council may consider waiving formal, or that that staff members, that council does waive the formal submission, but that we might make it contingent on applicant to have a couple of these items. Do we need to add that to?
Yeah, well, we'll want want to do that too. Is is there, let me, if you want to read them off?
Sure, I can do that. So I would I would say that I make the motion with the addition that the waiver is contingent on the applicant to provide copy of approved erosion and sedimentation control plan from for the project, from the project, the Cumberland County Conservation District twenty-two, sorry, two twenty-six dash dash twenty dot K. Sign and execute a stormwater operations and manage and maintenance agreement for the with the Borough for the stormwater B M Ps to be installed as part of the project, two seventeen dash seventeen dot E dot fifteen, semicolon twenty-six. Provide a copy of approved N P D E S permit for stormwater discharges during construction, two twenty-six dash twenty dot L, and provide a stormwater management plan for the project acceptable to the Borough Engineer, two seventeen dash seventeen.
We'll we'll take that as an amendment to the former motion. Does Council Hicks?
I second the amendment.
Okay, so with the full motion, along with the conditions listed by by Deputy Mayor Landis, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Hicks. On the new business, this is the second opportunity for the pub- public comment. So if you you thought of something during the course of the meeting that you'd like to comment on, now is now is your opportunity. Wait, we're gonna, we're gonna take numbers. Of course, we'll need name name an address for the record.
Oh, yeah, Jason Turner, one six five East High Street, Carlisle, PA. I've been working with Brenda and some of the guys in the Parks and Rec guys, and you guys have seen me speak before. And I just want to come across as somebody that is a community member. I've definitely been here trying to get other people to be here. My kids were trying to be here. But, you know, like, that's that's one of the things about this community. I mean, we're we're skaters, like, we'd rather be skating than sitting here. You know, it's taking me, it's taken me a long time to be able to sit here instead of go skate with them. But we, and when I say we, we've been, all of us, you know, it's kind of like you guys, you know, it it may be me here, but I've talked to twenty-five guys this week, or I've talked to thirty-five guys this week, and they've all talked to three or four guys. And from what we have, what we came from, what you guys have done, what Brenda, again, what you have done both here and in Parks and Rec, and what the whole community has come together to do, it it's come a long way. It's actually makes sense. It's a space that everybody can work in. It's it's, again, not the best thing in the world. But again, if you had the most money in the world, but you still didn't have more space, you would just stumble over yourself. There still has to be a safety standard. There still has to be room to transition and move from space to space and all those things. I think we're hitting that and still gave people with experience, people with not experience, a place to go. It's not the most perfect thing in the world, but it's something that the community in every aspect that does this as something can appreciate. We've also chatted and, again, with Chief Landis, we've all talked, and we definitely are all, again, the older guys, we we don't feel it's 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 right for us to come in here after, and we've been doing this. And again, we've tried this for thirty years now that I know of, that I've personally been involved. I mean, there's Tony Hawk skateboard ramp sitting in a garage somewhere. There's twenty-five thousand dollars in a bank somewhere that no one can touch because the guy is just not around anymore. I mean, people have been trying to do this. There was Skate Church. There was Pastor Chuck. I mean, there was the the skate park at the Carlisle Barracks for a while. It was literally just a tennis court with some two-by-fours. I mean, we'll, skaters will make the work if they're real skaters. I mean, we've been, we've been doing ledges and stuff that we've been getting chased off of for for decades. So we're we're not scared to do something, but we we really appreciate everything that's gone through. From my perspective and everybody that I've talked to, it's the most we could pull out of the space and not make it a safety hazard, not make it an inconvenience. And we definitely want to reach out. We really are appreciative that people are thinking about the lights and the situation that's going to come through with that. My perspective is, I've also been here with the food trucks, and that is what literally the Borough Council considers a food desert by definition of the last ordinance that was written. I know I was there. So I think that's an awesome idea, and I don't know if we'd have to go through the Parks and Rec to get that done, or if that would be something that we'd have to go through the Borough Council or the, because the way the ordinance is written, it's kind of a vague area in there. But I'd love to touch on that, and I think that would be awesome. Food trucks, events, I would love to get maybe a process going where we could get some local artists to actually do some stuff there. I mean, there's Aaron Rook and other people that have done, like, spray painting stuff, which kind of ties into our community, like the skateboarding community. But there's other artists out there doing all kinds of stuff. Maybe we can get some grants to do that. When we open the park, it'd be awesome if we could get actual places to come out and actual skateboarding companies to come out and, you know, maybe sponsor something. And that's a community thing. That's not something you guys do. That's something we do to support what you guys have put there for us. And I just wanted to, as a community member, come out and say, we've worked hard for this. You guys have worked really hard for this. I think it's the best we could have done with what we had and in the time, and I hope to see it come to fruition. As many of us as there are, you got our support, you know. You know, I guess sometimes there's just more faces than other times, but thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Stallworth. Who just came from thinking about race over the community center.
I did. In fact, I did. Tawanda Stallworth, truth and reconciliation co-chair. Mayor Schultz, Deputy Mayor Landis, members of Borough Council, good evening. And thank you for allowing me an opportunity to address you this evening. In the times past when I've come before you, I've come before with either a critical eye at times, and as always, have tried to balance that with appreciation for when things go right and when things are done right. So I do want to appreciate you and acknowledge your courage that you took and the stance that you took last week during the workshop meeting with the retirement of the Carlisle Borough Crest. I came across an article, and I just wanted to share some of it for you all. The news outlet here is Native News Online, and it's a news outlet that covers matters of for indigenous folks and concerns particularly related to their concerns all over the country. As you know, Carlisle was home to the Carlisle Indian Industrial School. I just want to read a snippet of the article here in relation to that crest. Among those children still buried at the Carlisle Barracks is the great aunt of Eleanor Haddon. Haddon, who lives in Alaska, has visited Carlisle several times over the past five decades to positively identify her great aunt's headstone, currently marked as unknown, and to encourage the Army to repatriate her remains back home. She's quoted, "I'm glad to see the logo is being retired," Haddon told Native News Online. "It definitely has a stereotypical Native American standing on the left. I see the frontiersman is on the right side, which could mean the correct side of civilization." Haddon added that in the nineteen fifty's, Western movies and television often stereotyped and glorified Native Americans, and those associations have carried through to today. "This logo is definitely a product of its time and does need to be replaced," she said. So I thank you for your courage. I thank you for your move in the opposite direction of gradualism and eventualism and doing the right thing last week. I applaud your efforts. I thank you. I support you, and I thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Stallworth. Is there any further public comment? Okay, we'll move on to reports from members of staff. Ambassador Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for Dickinson updates, the semester is off to a good start as we had some additional health and safety measures in place. There was a requirement that students should have two negative COVID tests prior to their arrival to campus. For two weeks, the dining hall was pickup only, restricted spectators at athletic events, and we conducted surveillance testing on ten percent of the student population and set a twenty-five percent person event limit. And it is recommended now that K N ninety-five mask be worn. And these measures helped to keep cases at a manageable number. And so, beginning this week, the dining hall has reopened, and spectators are now welcome and allowed at athletic events, and group limits for activities have been lifted. Secondly, we have a Clark Forum event honoring their Constitution Day program on Wednesday, February twenty-third at seven P M. in the Anita Tuvshin Schlechter Auditorium. It's titled Democracy Stress Test Analysis of Attempts to Overturn the Twenty Twenty Election Results, and that is also open to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Hayes. Council Mellon?
No report. I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for the honor of selecting me to join you, and that I look forward to to serving with you and to working with all of the Borough staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Stube?
I have nothing further, Stube. Thank you.
Council Ramsey?
Just wanted to throw something out that we might want to think about following Commissioner Stallworth's comments. I saw an article, I think, yesterday about the good work our police department is doing. I thought it was about the seal because the heading they used was that cartoonish picture. So maybe Borough Manager Chief Stephanie, we can work through, maybe working with some of our local media outlets moving forward as they write about things, switching it up and not not using that, maybe using a picture of chief or or some of our great officers. Thanks.
Notice you said chief or our great officers. I'll just note, we do, I have an updated council on on the final goal planning. We now have a list of facilitators that we're going to work through, and we'll we'll have a recommendation start scheduling soon because we're going to aim to have that in in March, yeah, so. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I have just two items. One is a mark your calendars ask for anyone in staff and also but on council is our North Side Ride is going to be happening again this year, which is the bike ride that we do with New Life Community Church, Hope Station, Project Share, Y W C A. And and so I always ride it, and we have had police officers ride with us before. I don't think any other councils have ever ridden, although they're supportive. But it is, it is going to be coming up on April second. It's a three-mile ride. It's very easy. You have lots of stops along the way. And you, and there's lots of fun things going on. It's a slow ride. It's not intense. So it's supposed to be April second, which is a Saturday. It will be around ten o'clock when we ship out, and we start at New Life. We end at Hope Station. And and if if it's a bad weather day, then the secondary is April ninth. So that's something to just consider, and also, obviously, all the community, but I am supposed to ask you folks. So I thought it'd probably So, uh, I thought I'd publicly ask you. And the other thing that has come up, um, is, is something that we can just consider. We don't have to necessarily come up with an answer tonight, but something that we should maybe be, um, thinking about. Uh, there's the eighty-three bridge tolling, um, possibility. Uh, our county commissioners did put forth a resolution, um, outlining why they are opposing it. A lot of the folks in Dauphin County are also opposing it. Basically, a lot of that is coming from the idea that, uh, folks will choose not to take the bridge and then it'll inundate our local roads and then could possibly have, um, other hazards and questions. The, it is because Penda needs money. And in the Penda strategy or document, there were about eighteen different strategies for funding. So I will say that the commissioner's report doesn't give one of those as like what they would like. They just simply are saying that they do not, they don't agree with that. So I think part of, uh, what I have been trying to think about, I did talk to Mayor Schultz a little bit about it, is, you know, we can say, we can read that, that resolution and say, yes, we are supportive of it. We could also say that we're supportive of it, but, you know, out of funding strategies, this could be something that, uh, our community could support. And, I mean, thinking a little bit bigger and, you know, this might, it is a little bit more work is that, you know, there's a lot of recommendations on eighty-one too. And I don't know if you've looked at those, but, I mean, they're robust things that affect Carlisle specifically. The, the eighty, the eighty-three, uh, tolling is obviously not directly in our community. But with eighty-one, um, it talks of shutting down up to two exits, connecting, directly connecting the turnpike to eighty-one. Um, I mean, so there's, and then there's our need for transit and, you know, supportive funding of, um, CAT. Uh, and so I think that looking at those three things instead of in silos, but collectively, but it, it is a bit of work to figure out what here as Carlisle Borough, what we have to offer, what we have to say. I do think it's, it's worthwhile to say something to Penda and, um, and, uh, if we're not supportive of one thing, um, we can say so, but we can also say we are supportive of something else. So there is a lot of documents, so we could send that out and have everyone sort of look at it, maybe go forth with, um, collectively trying to figure out what we would like to say. Uh, the eighty-three, um, comment period, I didn't catch what that was. Is there a timeframe on the? I know that Kirk Stoner from, um, the county planning, um, department is gonna be presenting to HATS, which is the Harrisburg area transit, not transportation, study. And so he's gonna be presenting that tomorrow, um, again, opposing specifically the eighty-three portion. But I do think there's merit in us also looking at that eighty-one work and figuring out what we, you know, as Carlisle, that's very impactful for us. I mean, it's actually an opportunity, but making sure that we're supporting what we think is the best possible outcome for here. So there's a lot of things that are moving all around us that could be very impactful for us. And also thinking of, um, with eighty-three, uh, uh, it would, the idea of, of tolling could make, you know, cars inundate that area, and that's sort of what happens here when eighty-one traffic comes through town. So we actually already feel what they're worried about feeling. Um, so I think that we do have, um, some synergies with other, you know, our other, uh, West Shore and East Shore communities.
Okay, I was trying to see if I could quick Google that, if there's any deadline on the comment period, but, um, is that, any, anybody else on council have reaction to that? I know this, this, I was gonna say, climate, climate action, you know, related to, right?
Yeah, just, um, obviously, this is related to, um, not just greenhouse gas mitigation concerns, but other pollutants that come from mobile sources that, um, directly affect our community. Um, I mean, we don't have to make up a goal, um, to, to point to, to read our comprehensive plan and look at, uh, objectives to, uh, reduce, um, uh, traffic calming and noise reduction. I mean, they're all there, and this is part and parcel to, to actually helping, um, achieve some of those, um, goals. So, um, I would certainly throw my support, um, for, for anything that would, efficiently, though, direct, um, traffic that's not here to buy our goods and services outside of our city center and, um, while, while still understanding that, uh, we, we have folks that, who work, you know, um, adjacent to our borough and, and businesses that, that demand, uh, access. But I think we have a lot of room to strike a better balance in those things and, uh, working with Cumberland County and other partners to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Ramsey?
Uh, just, just briefly, so I might be in the super, super small minority on this. I'm not, I'm not pro-tolling, but I'm glad Deputy Mayor Landis brought up, um, us bringing other options to the table. I think that's important. I, I think some of the, uh, rhetoric I've seen from Harrisburg is, no, this is terrible, don't toll, uh, when it's those folks who aren't funding, and that's, that's really the issue. So I, I think if we come to the table with a solution, uh, it's better than just saying this is awful, uh, because I think we all realize Penda needs the money and it kinda lets folks off the hook if we just oppose something and don't have, don't have an answer for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, um, so.
Maybe just, um, ask Mr. Mayor, um, if you had any ideas about what might be the best coordinated approach, if such a thing exists, to, to try to come up with sort of a, uh, yeah, a, uh, statement that would reflect sort of all, all of our, you know, goals and, and objectives for this effort, so.
Yeah.
Stand by for any good ideas.
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I quickly, I don't know if there was an additional public comment period, so this is not exhaustive, but I'm reading an article from March of last year. It said back then, the, the deadline, there was a deadline for public comment at that, at that point. So obviously, you know, there's, there's still time, there's always time for influence until, until it's, until it's enacted. So what I suggest is, is we put together a small special committee to, to put their heads together on this. I, I don't want to volunteer. Deputy Mayor is one. Counselor Hicks, would you like to be a part of that? And, um, and we could have one more. I'd, I'd be happy to help, help out, but, um, does anybody else have interest that would like to help with something together?
I mean, I don't really have any expertise on this, but I'm, I'm always happy to help proofread things. You know, happy, happy to help with the copy, the editing at the end.
And I do, I think, um, also, I mean, I don't know, I understand that there's timeframes. I think that there's a public comment as in like, there's a website that is open, but I, as, as, uh, Mayor Schultz mentioned, I mean, I do think that just getting a, um, something from our borough in writing can be a direct send. But also, I mean, if, if we do have more time, we could have Kirk or someone else from HATS present to us at our next workshop meeting, um, because it was very helpful at the County Planning Commission with Adam Wong. They presented, uh, that is specifically on eighty-one, and so there was a lot of upper, like, of things that were possible that made a lot of sense. And, uh, and then for eighty-three, that, the, the other funding strategies, I had to look down deep in the document, and there were some other opportunities for funding, and I think that that's the, that's the key is like, instead of just, no, we don't, we're not really into this idea, but, you know, here are some other things that we could be supportive of, and I think that as a community, we could get behind. So I think educating us and then figuring out how we can synthesize that into a document that could be sent along.
Yeah, so as long as we have time, I think, you know, we'll, we'll take advantage of whatever that time. And I hate to put him on the, on the spot. We have, but we have a bridge to the county sitting at the end here with us and Solicitor Brenneman. I, I don't know. So, sorry. Um, do you have, do you have any, I'm, I'm, I'm putting you on the spot a bit, but I don't expect anything, but I don't, I don't know. Is, is there, um, i- is there some, do you know if the county has some timeline that they're, they're working on to gain, gain support of, uh, the, the opposition to tolling of the eighty-three bridge?
I don't know specifically an answer to that, but I do know that they are exploring the possibility of litigation because Camp Hill, I think Wormleysburg, New Cumberland, uh, and maybe one other already have decided to do that. So they're going as a group, trying to recruit others on the West Shore in particular to join in the litigation. Uh, the idea there, I understand, is to try to get a legislative fix, a funding type fix at least. It's sort of preliminary right now, but, uh, that's where some municipalities are headed, and I think the county is considering that as well.
Okay, thank you. See, I, I made you talk at one of our meetings. Okay, so, so perhaps we'll, we'll do some outreach assault for a manager down there writing. Maybe, um, if you could do some outreach to, to Mr. Stoner and, and, and see what would be helpful, understanding that we're, we're probably gonna have a little more nuanced, um, perspective on, on this, but in general, supportive of finding the right, uh, funding for, for what, what they need. That, that may, may have, uh, less of an impact on, on the residents in Cumberland and Dauphin County.
Great.
And then we'll, we'll pull back together on that as we get that information.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, and that completes my report. Sorry to take so much time today.
That's, that's okay. Counselor Hicks?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, um, wanted to let folks know since we, we passed the, uh, the Climate Action Plan and in the process of, um, reorganizing the Climate Action Commission, working with, um, Borough Manager and, and, and yourself to, to get, get things lined up, but we, we haven't let this time go unused. And, um, tomorrow is the deadline, uh, for the state of Pennsylvania to get their plans to, um, federal government for how they plan to use, um, the monies for EV charging stations. And so, um, I'm looking forward to some, something that's guidance-worthy coming from Harrisburg on that. But, um, as most of the folks here know, we're looking very strategically at how we, uh, would systematically sort of approach, um, what an increased EV infrastructure is gonna look like in Carlisle. And I think it's none too early to be doing that and to put ourselves in a position that looks compelling when we do apply for the literally billions of dollars that are gonna be available. Um, I'm looking forward to, this will be a high priority, uh, when we reestablish the commission. We now have two of the three task force leads. I think that puts me comfortably in the position as chair to go ahead and reconvene at the end of the month and, um, continue to sort of, um, work out the, uh, the interactions between commission and, and other boards and staff and council. But I'm optimistic and appreciate everyone who's sort of still moving forward on a couple of projects, and it's, it's none too soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Barrett?
So that's Friday, uh, whenever they kicked off the, uh, Ice Fest. Um, I was there at the River Cutting with, uh, Mayor Schultz. We almost froze to death. It was really, really cold, uh, but it was, but it was really nice. And then, um, uh, Saturday, my son took my grandson to sit on the throne, on the courthouse, like a little prince he is. They took a couple of pictures, so it was really nice to see. Um, and I, and it, it seemed like, you know, people really, um, really enjoyed it. It was unfortunate that, you know, a few of them were destroyed, but other, other than that, I think that people really enjoyed it. And then one other thing is, uh, Hope Station has two events coming up at the end of the month. We have our Black Girls Chronicles Learning Series that's on the twenty-fourth. It's an all-day thing, um, on a Thursday. And then we have our Black Cultural Festival, which is on the twenty-sixth. We hope that you're able to come, especially to the Black Cultural Festival. I don't know, for those of you that know Linda Manning, she will be getting the Jim Washington Junior Award, Community Award, so we're excited about that. So, um, you know, check out our Facebook, our website, uh, we'd love to see you. And that's it. Um, oh, yeah, we had to move it. So this year is at the Carlisle Masonic Center on Holly Pike. So we'll see what that's like, because, you know, I didn't even know that place existed. As many times as I rode past it, I didn't, I, I just didn't pay attention because, you know, you're going and you're just driving. Uh, but it's really nice and, and we're, we're hoping that, you know, there'll be enough space for everybody. Hope that, you know, everybody comes, wear masks, uh, whether you're vaccinated or not. We are asking everybody to wear masks, and we're gonna do what we can to make sure everybody is staying safe. But, um, like I said, we'd love to see you. It's free, um, we have food vendors, you know, um, entertainment as we always do. So we're looking forward to it this year. So that's it.
Our manager, Armstrong. Anything for staff?
Yes, sir, thank you. I just want to take a quick opportunity, look down at the table over here at this talent that sits there quietly, attentive, attentive, and, uh, you know, and just thank them because, believe it or not, uh, there are a lot of projects in the pipeline right now, folks. And we could not do it without their leadership. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of them. And they all hooked arms and they're helping one another. I know that Chief Landis and the Police Department are actually, they hooked arms with, uh, our MS Four Coordinator on a DCNR grant, uh, this week, a writing of that. Chief Landis helping the Codes Office out, et cetera. So you don't always hear all of those stories, but, um, you know, I think it's important to recognize their work. You know, we got Richard and his team, um, just closed the year and ready for audit. And, uh, it'll be budget time before we know it again. So, uh, and I know that we have.
You can't wait.
We, I know.
For the audit and budget time.
Um, we have Andrea. I know she's on vacation, but she's still, uh, committed to being here. She is on Zoom, and a big shout out to Andrea for her heavy lift with, uh, Brenda on the linear part. That, that was a huge undertaking and, um, very appreciative of the work. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. We look, and we look forward to seeing, uh, Chief Landis popping Ollie at the skate, skate spot. Okay, with, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.